Good evening and welcome to the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four City Council Roundtable Meeting. I am Mayor Ross and tonight's meeting is being brought to you live using video conferencing technology provided by Zoom. Tonight's recording will be posted on the city's YouTube channel. So, welcome to everyone and thank you for joining us. City Clerk Dean, would you please call the role?
Councilmember Benson.
Here.
Councilmember Watten.
Here.
Councilmember Holloway.
Here.
Councilmember Cotton.
Here.
Councilmember Christensen.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Russ.
I'm here. And Councilwoman Washington said he will be late, so should we go ahead and excuse him?
The movement.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Johnson and second by Councilwoman Christensen? Yeah. Okay. Um. He waited. Waited. So, is there any discussion? CNN, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any pos nay? And Councilwoman Washington is excused. So, we now go to our first item of business, which is to approve the agenda, which is to continue deliberations of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six biennial budget. As your councilors motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Cotton, second by Councilwoman Christensen? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any pos nay? And the motion passes and the agenda is approved. So, as mentioned, tonight's special business is review and deliberation of the mayor's proposed twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six biennial budget. And this budget was released on September third. It was reviewed during a special workshop on September fourth and roundtable meeting on September ninth. And then each of the departments did their presentations last week to the respective council committees. And tonight, we will continue deliberations and welcome our Finance Director Drew Butey and Budget Manager Janet Walker to provide information and answer any of the council's questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Just one moment. We're sharing the screen. Was just reconnected to Zoom, so now we'll give it another shot. All right. So, good evening, Council, and thank you, Mayor, for the introduction. Much appreciated. Tonight, we're going to have a discussion regarding the twenty-five, twenty-six biennial budget. In essence, what I'm going to provide to you today is largely my concluding comments. We've gone through a lot of work of introducing the mayor's proposed budget to council. And so, at this point, we're going to be really turning it over to council's hands and having that discussion between really the council members about how they want to proceed with the budget moving forward. And maybe some of the changes that you would like to accomplish over the next two-year period too, and how we can incorporate that into the final budget product that we hope to produce relatively soon. So, with that said, sorry, one second. I'm reconnecting to Zoom. This point. Janet, do you mind if I can? You want to share your screen and then just go off the? All right. Thank you. So, just to go over some of the discussion topics today, for the most part, from our side, from the administration's side. I'm going to discuss with you how we're going to land the budget or what our intention is for landing the budget. Then, we're going to answer some additional questions that council members had. There's roughly three or so that we'll get through. And then, we're going to discuss some of the budgetary changes requested that were presented to the committees this past week as well. So, you heard certainly some of those changes requested. We're hoping to eventually get approval from council to actually incorporate those into the budget. And we'll go back through those. And then, finally, to finish up, we're going to have a council discussion as well about how you may want to proceed with the budget moving forward. And like I said, what kind of changes you may want to introduce into the budget. So, in terms of landing the budget, next slide. We are attempting to really kind of land the budget in a new economic environment and with some outstanding items. And those are really our kind of challenges that we're confronting right now, is how do we actually land the plane when it comes to the budget? Terms of the economic environment is relatively new, because we're now on the other side of this inflation spike that we saw over time. And so, the Federal Reserve recently cut the rate point five percent, fifty basis points. Interest rate cuts are designed to actually heat up the economy by making it cheaper to borrow and invest. And so, they're trying to stoke the engine, for the most part, the train engine, to keep it kind of running and to actually see more growth over time. And as we kind of discussed earlier, this month, the survey of several reputable forecasts puts the chance of a recession at roughly twenty-five to thirty percent within the next twelve months. And so, we've got this kind of changing economic environment right now, where we're now kind of on the flip side of that inflationary increase. And right now, it feels relatively stable, but we always have to be mindful that things could change in the future and we've done our best to, in essence, prepare for that, any sort of consequences that may come down the road. In terms of the next slide, if you don't mind, outstanding items. We discussed with you kind of where we're at when it comes to the utility rate study. So, consequently, what we do have within the budget itself is really kind of a placeholder until we actually get through that utility rate study. So, that is one of the outstanding items. Ideally, when we do adopt the rate study, we'll be coming back to you with the budget amendment to reflect what was approved in that utility rate study. One of the other kind of large outstanding items is the North Bend Police Service Contract, and we've had discussions with council about that over time. It is very important to keep in mind that the biennial budget is a snapshot in time, a spending authority that can be amended, really a proverbial living document. So, I know, I think council members are always fond of saying that, you know, no plan survives contact with the enemy on day one, for the most part, right? And so, consequently, there will be potentially changes in the future that may require us to alter where we go when it comes to the budget. Our goal, I think, for the most part, especially in light of these two outstanding items, is try to create the financial capacity necessary to handle any potential challenges without service disruption. And so, we're always mindful that we may need some financial capacity in our hands to work with, for the most part, to be able to resolve some of these issues that may be coming forward and so on. And so, we want to make sure that there's room. And I think what you've seen as a part of the administration's budget over time is if you were to go look at that financial forecast table specifically for the general fund, governmental operating itself, you will find capacity in there where we're still achieving our financial targets, for the most part. But having that capacity necessary to handle anything that may come along in the future, it's a good thing to have overall. I mentioned this, next slide, please, a little bit here. Really, our goals as well as to achieve a balanced budget, which the budget that we proposed in front of you certainly does. But then also, our goals are to meet the reserve target. And so, those are some of the financial requirements that are in play that strategically work us into certain decisions. The key question that I've asked before is that, especially at the beginning, is the city a so-called financially sustainable? And certainly, I think Councilwoman Benson called this out as kind of a facetious question previously, for the most part, because generally, the answer is always going to be no over time, for the most part. But our goal this past year, especially with the public sales tax, TV sales tax, has been try to stretch that out as much as possible, for the most part. So, at least over the two-year period, will revenues keep pace with the change in expenditures annually? On an ongoing basis, yes. And hopefully, we've demonstrated that to council as a part of the financial forecasts. And we know that the crossover point is going to come up, but that's right now, at this point, twenty-nine, twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty, kind of at this stage. And so, we know that we have to remain proactive when it comes about making sure that we can continue to push that curve out over time, so that we can protect the services that the public enjoys here at the city of Soqualmie. You've seen the next slide with the financial forecast chart, and this is just kind of restating what I just showing exactly what I just said. With the crossover point between twenty twenty-nine and twenty thirty, at this stage, you can see that the green line exceeds the orange line up to that date, and then the orange line grows at a faster clip than our revenues will over time. And so, we are very mindful of that. And I know the next slide itself, if you pull that one up right there, it's the very familiar Venn diagram with the different options. And I think Councilmember Johnson mentioned having kind of different options in our back pocket. Certainly, we've played some of those options here during this budget cycle itself, but we need to make sure that we're always constantly looking and trying to generate those other cards in our back pocket that we can play when we need to. And the different kind of options that we have available. You see it there in the red economic development. Blue revenues, what kind of revenues can we raise over time? How can we optimize levels of service? That's what you'll see on the level in yellow right there. And then, economic development, how can we increase the economic development in the community, for the most part, to help generate those revenues that sustain the city overall? Next slide, please. So, my challenge, I guess, for council or call to action, if you want to consider it, is considering the economic environment, the outstanding items and our financial requirements, does council want to change the budget? So, that is the primary question for council here today and moving forward. As I mentioned earlier in this presentation that we've kind of presented on the mayor's proposed budget, but now it's really time for council to take the reins of the budget and determine what council wants to do moving forward for the next two-year period. Hopefully, from what you've seen from the budget that's been produced, it meets generally the goals and objectives of council that council has created this past year. But you may have changes to those goals and objectives, and that should ultimately be reflected in the budget to help drive us towards that future state that council desires. The trade-off, of course, for council is balancing levels of service with our financial requirements. So, we can't fund everything. Unfortunately, there's scarcity, right, of money overall. And so, some things we just won't be able to do, but others we will. And so, it comes down to prioritizing what we should be doing as a city within the budget. And then, lastly, I just want to bring up this point. The budget charts an organizational and financial path for the next biennium, but we do not need to stay on that path if things change. So, in essence, we are very committed to pivoting if we have to. The reason why I bring up the economic condition overall is because that could change. It certainly changed with the pandemic. It could certainly change on a dime. If we do go into recession, we need to be steadfast in making sure that we monitor where we are at any one moment in time, so that we can bring back information to council as soon as we can. And so, certainly, the budgets, charts, and organizational financial path, but as I mentioned, it is a snapshot in time. And we will do our best to stay on top of that. So, if there's any sort of changes financially overall, we come back to you immediately to address those financial challenges. And so, I think with that said, in terms of the next slide, next steps. Today, we are working towards landing the budget, trying to figure out what that looks like and kind of discussing some of the other items that we have coming up here shortly with Janet. We're hoping to gather council's changes to the proposed budget, and really, we're seeking generally majority support for those changes. So, we're looking for generally a consensus, a majority consensus for what you may want changed. It's hard enough for us to try to read what council's thinking up here. And so, and so, we know that one council member may say one thing, and then a couple may nod a little here and there, but in some cases, it's hard for us to interpret that. And so, some clarity when it comes to maybe what those changes are and making sure that we've got majority support would be very beneficial to us on this side. When it comes to September the thirtieth, this will be a special meeting. It's the fifth Monday month. We will be reviewing the impact of those proposed changes. So, we want to make sure that everything's kosher when it comes to the financial requirements, that we're still meeting our reserve targets and that we're still achieving a balanced budget. Ideally, we'll also have a first reading of the twenty-five, twenty-six biennial budget ordinance on this date, as well as a public hearing. So, that will be the opportunity for the public to come and kind of comment on the budget. And then, similarly, on October the third, which is a Thursday, I ideally, at that time, we would bring to you the second reading of the twenty-five, twenty-six biennial budget ordinance with a public hearing with potentially an adoption of the budget at that meeting too. But with the understanding that council may need more time with it as well. So, we're not steadfast necessarily to that date, but we would certainly appreciate it if we do achieve that at that date. It would probably be the earliest that we've ever adopted the budget by that time. So, with that said, I would like to welcome up Janet for the next section.
So, our first question on the next slide is, would any of the upcoming statewide initiatives affect the city budget? And the easy, quick answer to that is not really, but I'm going to go through them because there are small effects. The first one, HB two zero four four is the removal of supplanting restrictions for levy lid lifts for cities within King County. And cities like us who are within King County are limited in how we do a property, a levy lid lift. We can't replace revenues that already exist. For example, if we're paying for the police department out of property taxes, we can't just say we're going to do a levy lid lift and replace all those funds with this levy lid lift. I believe that the intent is new programs. The lid lift should fund something new, and they have removed that. So, we have more options in our budgeting, but we're not looking at taking that option in twenty-five, twenty-six. We are not proposing a levy lid lift. The second one, SHB two four two eight, cities and towns may agree to share sales tax within certain areas to promote shared projects. This expands our options to collaborate with other cities. I believe it started for Walla Walla and College Place. They wanted to, they had, instead of competing for sales tax revenues, they wanted to share that sales tax revenue and then be able to share share projects. And so, by collaborating, they would have a better result for both cities. So, that expands our options, what we could do with some of our neighboring jurisdictions, but we are not proposing anything to do with this initiative, this go-around.
Good question.
Councilwoman Benson?
Wouldn't there, wouldn't there necessarily be a loser in that?
Well, if Home Depot or Costco were to come to North Bend and Soqualmie, maybe one of us would make a lot of concessions to get them in our city. Doesn't affect the other city in the end. They lose the revenue, but the other city maybe didn't get the best deal. So, if they're collaborating and saying, yes, we want you here, we'll share the revenues. We're not going to cut you some sweetheart deal, but our community needs you and we would benefit, you would benefit by being out here.
I see.
Then, potentially, there's a better arrangement. It would require a lot of collaboration with another jurisdiction, but there is a scenario where I think it could make sense.
Thank you.
On the next slide, we have a few initiatives that are on the ballot. Initiative number two zero six six requires utilities to provide natural gas to eligible customers. This potentially could increase our revenues, but it is a negligible amount. So, we haven't adjusted our revenue estimates based on this voter initiative. And of course, it is on the ballot, so it's not set in stone. Initiative number two one two four allows employees to opt out of long-term care insurance. That is currently a requirement, and if that were enacted, then we would have some operational changes within the city, but it wouldn't affect our budget as these are paid one hundred percent by employees, by individuals, not companies and governments. Initiative number two one zero nine, to repeal the capital gains excise tax on gains over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This tax is a state tax. We don't get any revenue from this, but it does fund things like early childhood education. So, there's a chance that if this isn't funded, we would have to look to other sources for revenue, or we may have to fund something ourselves, but it is, it's sort of a how would this affect us? My guess is it wouldn't affect us. Initiative number two one one seven, prohibit carbon tax credit trading and repeal provisions of twenty twenty-one Washington Climate Commitment Act. This would most likely have an effect, actually, along with the other one on grants that we receive. So, this is another state initiative, state revenues, but we are receiving a climate change grant. Would we have received that if, if all of these tax credits were repealed? Maybe, maybe not. And the final ones were initiatives approved by the legislature. I don't believe that they would have a budgetary effect, but we can run through them really quickly. One, remove certain restrictions on police vehicular pursuits. Though perhaps operationally, but not budgetarily. Next, we have one that provides parents with a right to review educational materials, receive certain notifications, and opt out of sexual health education. And then, finally, we have one that prohibits the state of local governments from enacting taxes based on personal income. And that is not something that the city has explored at all. So, something that wouldn't affect us. Any questions before I move on to the next one?
I think the climate, can you go back to the one, one before? Let's see. So, I think this does impact some of the transportation projects. And then, also, there's a certain percentage that actually goes to tribes as well. And I don't have the list here, but so, there is some impact there that might impact some of our future projects.
Thank you for that clarification. Next question, does the GIS analyst position really carry a cost of compensation over a hundred and seventy thousand per year? Yes, but I do want you to remember that that's salary and benefits. So, salary makes up about sixty-five percent of that, medical premiums at twenty-three percent, and then the remainder are things like social security, pensions, other small required payments. So, a fully loaded employee is, it's much higher than just their salary cost. Next question is, in the biennial budget comparison table, Appendix A three, the reduction in appropriation seems attributable to a decrease in the Utilities Capital Fund, which is number four hundred and seventeen. What changed? And there are increases and decreases within that fund, but the primary decrease is that we are building the waste, the water reclamation facility phase three, which is over fourteen million dollars. It's a very large project, and the bulk of that is happening in this biennium. There will be some residual in twenty twenty-five, but taking that out really changes our capital expenditures. Another note is that the Utilities Capital Fund is very dependent on the utility rate study, and it will be passed as part of the twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty Utility CIP. We've already done the non-utility CIP, but these numbers will be updated, finalized, as we get more information through the utility rates. Our next item is budgetary changes requested, and some of you will recognize these as they came out of the committee meetings last week. These are all requests from various departments. Our first one is the Community Development Reorganization. Like to reclassify an associate planner position into an administrative specialist, and that position is currently vacant. But if we were able to do that, it would reduce expenditures by approximately fifty-four thousand dollars over the biennium. Our next one is Human Services. It's associated with AB twenty-four ninety-four. And this one is actually coming up in our council meeting soon, but there was a proposal. We budgeted a certain amount for Human Services, and the request that came in from community partners was above that amount. And it was determined that potentially, the opioid funds could cover approximately eighty thousand dollars of that. Funds that we mostly have in hand, but will, we are expecting to receive over the next biennium. And then, there was another portion that would be funded by the general fund, non-departmental, and that portion is nineteen thousand. Both of those numbers are over the whole biennium. So, you will see that agenda bill later in council meeting. Some considerations for that one. With the opioid fund, we believe that these expenditures are qualified expenditures.
Councilwoman Cotton?
In the information that was in our packet, the nineteen thousand dollars a year, it, if I read that correctly, that gap is going to go on for the next ten years that we would supplement that additionally, besides the opioid fund, that option C, I think it was.
I have to confess that I don't know if it continues.
It's just for the biennium.
It's just for the expense. What was that phrase in there about the ten-year? But I'd have to go back and look. Maybe you'll bring it up later with the other information.
Oh, you know what I think? It's the reference is to the I think that was in the budget statement. It's about the ten-year financial forecast. So, it sounds like it may be my misunderstanding, but generally speaking, when we commit money to Human Services, that money just, they need a little bit more each year, like all the, like any expenditure. So, I think that when I looked at that within the financial forecast, I included that as an on, or I would, I haven't done it yet because it hasn't been approved, but I would include that with ongoing expenditures. According to our city clerk, that may not be necessary. So, we'll, we'll dig more into that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Christensen?
If you're going to include that in the ten-year forecast, would you need to include the additional eighty thousand as well, since we probably won't be getting an additional eighty thousand out of the various opioid settlements?
That's something we may want to look into doing, depending on how we want to fund this in the future. If we want to fully fund everything that's requested, probably yes. If we make a different determination, then we can, we can adjust.
Thank you.
Okay. And on the next slide is our final one, which relates to stormwater. This is Operation Find a Pond, and the goal is that, as you can see, I lifted these pictures from Parks and Public Works' presentation last week, that the picture on the left is what the ponds used to look like, and that picture on the right shows that they are now hidden by a layer of vegetation. So, the goal is to improve some maintenance so that they are once again at NPDES permit requirements for these storm ponds. And the requirement would be a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for the biennium to get the ponds, I believe it's twenty-two or twenty-three, up to standard. Those are our three requests. And we can go into questions now, or we can turn the time over to you for deliberation if that's.
Councilwoman Benson?
Well, I just like to say in general, I'm, I've been very impressed with all of the presentations on the budget. And Mr. Butey, the way Mike Tyson said it was, everybody's got a plan until he gets punched in the mouth. And listening to the departmental presentations and to your presentations about the budget and the way you guys are thinking about the budget, it really, it really seems to me like everybody has anticipated that punch in the mouth, that, that, that it could come and that, that we could respond to it. The conservative ways that you're looking at the numbers and the, the better services that, that we're anticipating getting from those numbers, I think is both aggressive and safe. The, the way that, that the numbers are being looked at. And it seems to me that the, the things that are being asked as additional budgetary concerns seem really fantastic. I was actually shocked at the hundred seventy-two thousand dollar price tag for fixing twenty-three ponds so dramatically. So, you guys are all better at looking at spreadsheets and finding numbers that stick out and seem strange and asking questions about that sort of thing. And I'm absolutely open to anything that y'all have found, but in general, I'm, I'm really, I'm really very, very pleased by this whole process and what's been presented. So, I just wanted to put that out in the beginning before anybody wants to contradict me.
Thank you. Please note that Councilwoman Washington has arrived.
Hey, Liz. That's actually mine accidentally left over there.
Okay.
Oh, that's so mean.
Pass it, dog.
Council, do we have any questions or?
It's bad.
Ideas? Councilwoman Cotton?
Well, I guess then I'll take this opportunity to get back to the opioid proposal. So, reading through the, you know, some of the information that's come out from the AG as far as the the requirements for the uses of the opioid fund and also the MOU that came out with that. I did have some questions and a couple of questions, if I might kind of link them together. One is that it certainly in King County is requiring that there be the formation of an opioid abatement council, an OAC, and do we have that? Yet? In place?
Not yet. We do have ideas of who can be on that.
Yeah.
Especially, you need to be in the expertise. You're the one that studied that. I love it. Do you want to?
I know, I know there was expertise in the, you know, that, what was it, exhibit? E that listed all of those uses and going from the, starting with category A and then working down to lower categories. So, I did read through that. If there was anything different than that, I would certainly appreciate, but it looked like work or experience or training in those areas was what was outlined. It really left it pretty open as far as like potential numbers of people that can be on that committee, as far as that's at the city's discretion. But my concern kind of with the, while I'm, I'm all in favor of Human Services, and I know there's never enough money to go around, and we'd like to fund everything every year, all the time. But since that council would actually need to, you know, approve the Um, but since that um, council would actually need to um, you know, approve the methodology, um, the, and have um, community based priority input um, on that. Uh, the receiving and reviewing of input, approving, denying um, input, receiving distributing funds, and of course, the, the public transparency with that. Um, since we haven't even got the committee um, to, you know, kind of go through proposals, and proposals have not been submitted besides this particular one. I would hate to see us commit all the, the opioid settlement funds to just the, the, the human services uh, requests um, and tie that up over the next few years when there actually could be um, other um, agencies or departments that could also um, ultimately utilize some of these funds, including um, our first responders um, by in, you know, improving and continuing with teaching to the schools and do community outreach and things like that. Um, as well as helping with um, you know, our dispatchers and such. So I don't want to rule out the possibility of using some of the, the opioid settlement funds for our first responders is what I, is the point I'm ultimately getting to.
True. I mean, I, so, so this is something we need to come up with, right? We've already identified that we do need the, the um, I guess the team or the, the board that would review it, and it's similar to our human services. So we've already kind of gone through, we know how to do the application process. And um, and there's someone that sits on it that would be a great candidate for that board, because she has the experience.
Mm hmm.
Um.
And the human services already goes through a process and a methodology for um, reviewing applications.
I saw the scorecard.
Categories that, yeah. And so it would be maybe a spin off of the Human Services Advisory Committee with maybe those members if they are interested in serving, as well as the chiefs and other uh, other people, um, like the mental health, um, behavioral socialists, and perhaps um, you know, we could open it up to others, but um, so there is kind of a, a tentative plan on how to get that. Now, we already have received some of those funds, which um, finance could maybe um, help me with, but um, so there are, it feels like each of the funds that we've received or will receive have different requirements. And so, you know, if we're gonna set the bar on that council, which would be like the highest threshold, we would, you know, want to have that um, council, that uh, abatement council in place. But we've already received funds that we think would already meet the requirements without the council. I don't know, we still have to look at that. I did amend the um, agenda bill for the council meeting to say that um, if the uses were, if the requests were determined allowable, um, we would, almost like we would, uh, we would kind of, if you, if that, if council were willing to approve that, we would look at those uses between now and, you know, when the next year's budget um, is put into place on twenty twenty five. But um, and then they, if it, if it's not, then they would be unfunded. So there would be a caveat in there, like, we'll take a look at that, um, if you're willing to approve that, and I'm not being very eloquent here, but um, so we kind of, you know, we have like, thought about that internally, Plan A, Plan B, and trying to, you know, trying to find a way to fund these organizations. Um, it is that, that amount is just for the twenty five, twenty six. These applications are just for the two years. In two years, agencies will submit applications for the next biennium. So these are not ongoing year after, you know, budget after budget after budgets, just for this one.
Okay.
I don't know if that answers your question or not. It's kind of like there, it's an unknown at this point in time, because we really need to dive deeper into that. But we, we have thought about it, and we have some tentative plans that we would like to put in place, but um.
The, the paperwork, especially in the M O U and the, the um, the uses um, of documents, we're definitely um, because of having to have the transparency, that it looked like they were mandating an O A C make these decisions um, about that. So I can't see us approving anything or going forward without having that um, abatement council um, in place to, to, you know, give its stamp on those particular items if, if so. And again, as I said, um, making sure that no, other agencies, you know, aren't interested in participating in, in that funding as well.
True.
I would agree, we won't spend that money without the abatement council, but we can appropriate it. We can say if we are able to set up that council and set up, open it up to the public and things like that, we can appropriate it right now so that we're ready to roll when we have that um, those steps, those check, those boxes checked.
Councilor Johnson, thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like uh, it, it could be that we've put the cart before the horse a little bit in uh, saying, okay, so we've got a couple of proposals for specific things that uh, these, say eighty thousand dollars could be appropriated to. And if uh, those are the only uh, uh, services that would meet the requirements that uh, there are that are currently, or that would be uh, requesting the funds, then okay, cool, we've got them, and uh, those get the stamp of approval from uh, whomever is legally required to give the stamp of approval, and that's all well and good. However, it could be that perhaps uh, there are other uh, services that could have wished to put their uh, uh, to uh, to put in the request, yes, thank you, put in the request. Uh, but uh, they didn't know that there was a request uh, period open to request for these funds. And in which case, perhaps this isn't exactly entirely fair to all the different uh, programs that could be requesting these specific funds. So I guess that's a roundabout way of saying that, again, maybe we've put the cart before the horse a little bit here. And uh, uh, perhaps we do need to appropriate these funds. Um, I'm not sure how specifically we need to appropriate them. Perhaps it's, we appropriate them to what this uh, council, uh, should it have to be formed and should it be formed? Uh, puts forward as um, uh, as kind of a set of um, uh, I don't know if the right term is, but um, recommendations to council uh, for the use of these funds. And then the council comes back with also the consultation from staff, of course, saying, yeah, these legally meet the requirements. And this council has said this is what we should spend these funds on, so council says, okay, this is what we would approve. So essentially, it'd be kind of like what we do with human services, uh, as I believe the city clerk said. Um, but with this, this other advisory council acting in the position of the human services um, committee. So that's where I'm at, is maybe we just need to pump the brakes a little bit on appropriating these to these exact uh, requests uh, that have come in, and we instead hold these funds for that period so that anyone who does have a, a proposal can put in their proposal, and then we can appropriate as appropriate.
Councilmember Benson.
You didn't want to say my name? I get it, I get it. Um, the uh, I, I, your, your point about that, it was like a two week application period um, for, for the, for these uh, funds, if I read it right, was that?
It was a one month.
It was a month, oh, okay, all right, all right. For, for, for whatever reason, it seemed, it seemed really short when I was reading it as well. But the only other point that I, I would want to make is, I don't think that using the, it, these eighty thousand dollars to increase funding necessarily locks us into anything in the future. Um, I, I think that we can fund things now, and then later on, if the funding isn't there to help us fund these things, say, we can't fund that much in the future. I think I, I, you know, that uh, Ms. Walker's point that, that these things tend to increase year after year, I think is true, but that, that's because councils approve that. Um, which is not to, I'm, I'm not uh, making a judgment on whether or not these eighty thousand dollars should be applied to, to this or not. And um, and I think uh, Ms. Mr. Johnson and Ms. Cotton both make excellent points about the use of these funds. And uh, one of the questions that I did have when I was reading is, are these eighty thousand dollars really gonna be going directly to opioid abatement? Because uh, they're going to, the, the way, the way it's written, they're going to groups that would certainly encounter opio, folks with opioid problems. But I don't know that that necessarily means that all of those funds are going toward opioid, opioid abatement. And are we, are, are we, I, you know, are we trying to finagle uh, money into uh, a position that it's not really meant for? Uh, which I think if I'm, if I'm hearing you right, was what your point was, Councilmember Cotton.
So we, Council rotten.
Well, to turn to another topic, since this is a roundtable. And that is, I, I think that we need to review our operating reserves. We reviewed it two years ago, and if my recollection is correct, we increased it slightly to fifteen percent. The mayor pro tem Holloway can help maybe me with my recall. But, but my one concern is this, and, and I'm just looking at the M R S C guidance on it. And it shows, depending on what it is, if, if it's for utilities, for instance, it could be a twelve percent set aside, we set fifteen percent. But it, it talks about operating um, reserves of sixteen and a half to sixteen point seven percent. And given that the unknown of our environment coming up and, and the risk, I, I, I think it's important for us to start at that point to make sure, one, are we comfortable with the fifteen percent reserve? Or do we want to bump it up slightly? Um, Mr. Butte, do you have some perspective? Or something that I'm missing, because this is not my area of expertise, but I want to be cautious before we set the rest of the budget.
Yeah, so um, to your question, national organizations are low to actually set a percentage, um, primarily because they understand that you need to customize your reserve target per the community that you have overall. And so consequently, the best practices will tell you that you just need an operating reserve, but you have to go out and figure out what your risk tolerance is right overall, and then set it appropriately to reflect that. Sixteen point five percent is roughly equal, that's basically ninety days of operating reserves, which is how they get that sixteen point five percent overall. What we've got currently in the policy is between fifteen and twenty percent. With the previous conversations that we had with council, last budget cycle, they were more willing to um, go at fifteen percent as opposed to twenty percent. In essence, generally, reserves might require some detailed analysis. Um, you want to probably stress test, right, for the most part, which does require effort and financial analysis on our part to actually do that. You know, it's not just making sure that you've got money in case there's an economic consequence, but do you have money in case there's an infrastructure issue that arises in which you need a debt service payment, right? For example, to make um, itself. When it comes to the utilities, um, generally, some of the utilities are, don't break as often as others, and so you may need a higher operating reserve than you do for, you know, generally sewer. Actually, water might be higher than, for example, stormwater, you know, as a consequence of that, um, overall. We've been very, just kind of set it at one level at this point. But over time, we can certainly bring back that conversation. We had a conversation when it comes to this, we've updated the reserve targets when it came to the financial management policy earlier. And so what you see in the book right now for the financial management policy is what council adopted on June the tenth of this year, uh, when it comes to those um, reserve targets. Uh, we'd be happy to explore that with council if we want to move in that direction. Uh, the next time that we would probably ideally was, uh, look at the financial management policy is probably early twenty twenty six at this stage, because we want to keep that on a two-year cycle overall. Um, but it really depends on your risk tolerance. When we started this conversation and adopted a whole new set of policies uh, back under the previous finance director, uh, we did ask council some questions regarding their risk tolerance overall. Um, the survey that was presented, um, I don't think was accepted very well necessarily overall. And so we just stuck with that kind of a range of fifteen to twenty percent.
That's, we have about ten minutes, Mayor Pro Tim Halling.
I guess two things, because I gotta come back around, because we didn't settle. Um, uh, um, I guess from the human services, I come at a different, different angle, that being, we ought to authorize the human services appropriation with some portion of it contingent upon opioid qualification or appropriation. But to go ahead and do the overall human services appropriation as that, okay? And then let that opioid process take, come into effect and do that, that, that should at least um, get some of the human services stuff going. Put us on the hook to get the opioid stuff going, so that we can then get the, the rest of the human services. So that would kind of be my recorda, recommendation from there. Uh, I still want to keep on the second point, I want to keep on the docket. Uh, I still want to make a motion to reduce the uh, the administrative fee for uh, solid waste. Again, uh, the overall rate's going over forty percent. None of our labor rates or capital rates have gone, are increased by forty percent. Okay, that's what we really believe that is made up of, that we're taking money without justification. So it ought to be brought back down to somewhere around, it's ten point seven right now, probably five point five, which is still be a twenty percent increase in the revenue from prior, which is still pretty reasonable compared to what our labor and capital costs are doing. Um, so as we get into the later discussions, expect me to have a motion and have discussion to at least give some of that money back to the bienniums.
So it would stay for our contract, then the next time we can change it is September first, next year.
So when we had discussion, administration took action to have discussion with the vendor, if whether or not they would accept or change in that rate prior to the, at a more reasonable time than that. So if that was not carried out, I, I'd like to know it, and I'm very disappointed, but that was the A, A action and agreement from administration to talk with the vendor about accepting a rate change on that outside of the cycle.
So the motion was, I'm in the contract to have initial administration fee defined by January twenty twenty five, and that, that failed for councilmembers to two. So I believe that the next comment that you stated was to make sure that we put it on our calendar so that by the time we raise it, we can raise it to be September first. It has to be um, submitted to them by September first or January twenty twenty six. Increase, change.
We can go back and view the audio, no matter, I disagree with that redemption. There was an agreement the administration would go through and work with the vendor that they would accept the rate change in Ja, in, in June of next year, if we got it to them at a reasonable amount of time.
Because the motion failed, so four councilmembers voted, okay, but four councilmembers voted against. And I'm not sure if they're stuck on changing the contract or changing admin fee. So we need to have the ch, the con, conversation about change the administration fee that needs to be voted on. Because four councilmembers said no.
Not in January.
We, 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 there was some discussion of changing the administration fee, and to get the concurrence in the vendor, they would accept it on a sequence slightly different than what was in the contract. Now, if we want to, we can go back in the audio.
We can listen to audio, but does everyone, I mean, tonight, we do talk about the majority, we need to, and, you know, agree to if they want to change the administration fee. Councilor Benson.
The, the way I'm remembering the discussion, we weren't particularly concerned about waste management having a problem with us adjusting this fee, because it doesn't affect their bottom line. It, it's just, it, it's all about collecting money for, so our concern was not that waste management was going to have a problem with this kind of change. That would, that's the, that's the way I remember the conversation, was that if we wanted to adjust that fee, that that would be something that they would probably be amenable to, since it, it doesn't, it doesn't affect their bank account at all. Um.
Councilor Washington.
That's what I recollect, that we were voting to approve the contract, but then we were saying that we reserved the right to go back and have this discussion around the fee, and that it wouldn't necessarily affect waste management.
Yeah, that's the way I remember it too.
Councilor Martin.
Question is, does that only impact the enterprise funds? That fee because it stays within the utilities?
No.
Does not? Goes to general operations?
It's a general fund.
Okay.
Uh, source of revenues.
And there was examples of what we use that fee for. Or that.
Yeah, Parks and Public Works wants to come up and.
Councilor Benson and.
Go to Louis first.
Yeah, mine's just real quick. So um, question, I constantly go follow it. Um, if there's a reduction, are you proposing like a cap, an overall cap to the agreement? Or just kind of a year to year?
Right now, it's, it's, they said at ten point seven.
Correct.
Okay, that, and because it's just a flat rate. It, that, that revenue stream will increase by forty percent due to the fact that the overall cost of that utility is going up by forty to our communities. Okay, I do not believe our labor and capital costs have increased by forty percent.
Understood.
Okay, so uh, I'm, my thinking is to make it appropriate or a little again, to give something back to the community, it would be like ten point five, which would in essence be a twenty percent increase in that revenue versus a forty percent increase in that revenue.
Cap for the entire contract.
Well, that rate would, would go proceed on from there.
Okay, okay, okay.
It, it's a rate. It's not a cap. It's a rate. It's not a dollar.
Councilor Benson?
Um, so that was, that was the question that I had about what you were saying is that you said that our our labor, uh, our labor costs have not gone up forty percent. Forty percent in what period of time? You know, our, our rate is going up by forty percent. That's not just a year-over-year increase. No, I get it. Yes, it, it was one rate the, the, the last year, and now it's going to be a higher rate this year. Yes. But when that rate was, but when that last rate was initially, I, I you know, when the people talk together and they come up with a thing negotiated. When that last rate was negotiated, it wasn't last year. It was a long time ago, and uh, I, I want to say, how many years? Twelve years?
Twenty twelve, yeah.
Twelve years, twelve years. How, are you, i- is it your feeling that uh, that our, our labor costs haven't gone up forty percent in twelve years?
No, it's not, but that's not the way the math works.
Yeah, because they get an increase every year.
Because it is, it is a flat percentage. Right now, it was, twelve years ago was ten point seven. I participated in setting that rate. Okay, and I can tell you how it was figured out. Um, and truth was picked out of the. Um, all right. But it has been ten point seven ever since. Okay, so every time that rate, the cost of that service increases, the revenue increases proportionally and has from the very beginning. Okay, and even at that stage when we said that rate, we, we had stated at some time when we see a significant jump in the rate, there's a relief valve to take the administrative costs down to soften that a little bit.
Okay.
We didn't envision a forty percent jump back to that forty percent. Fortunately, this contract's been very good for us. We've been able to control those costs leading up to now, but uh, we're kind of paying the piper. And so is everybody else's rates have gone up.
Okay, I, I.
It is a year-over-year forty percent jump. And it's a flat rate against that.
Okay.
Ten point seven percent.
All right. I, 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 I guess I, I, I appreciate that explanation. I guess I'd, I'd be interested in hearing Mr. Butte's uh, interpretation of, I, on the answer to the same question.
So we have about one minute.
Well, we may not settle tonight, I assume. So. I'll just say, basically, it's, it's a twelve-year contract, was adopted at the ten point seven percent, or really, I think it was twelve percent on eighty-nine point five percent of the fees collected. So that's how they came up with the ten point seven, they did that math. There were inflationary increases over time, so the CPI was built into that basically to where we would see that CPI increase over time. For the most part, which is reflective, I believe, the council members' comments. There's tipping fees, right, that are well, I don't, I'm not quite sure if it included the tipping fees that King County right, would charge necessarily for, it was just a straight CPI increase, but we'd have to go check the, the contract, the last one, for the most part.
So it's, we have five minutes. Yeah, one last comment.
One left, not a comment on, on this. Except in the extent of a question on, I can't remember which committee meeting it was in, but we were talked about um, the cha- charging impact fees. And what I wanted to know from finance in the future is how it would affect if we were providing EMS, fire, and police to the tribe at Salish and the uh tribal commu- uh admin up on Ethan Wade Way, um, if we can, you know, what kind of impact or fees that might potentially come to, or when that, if that would even affect this budget by any end.
So it certainly is a work in progress, as council knows, right? For the most part, we can provide estimates potentially, although there is litigation behind it, and so we're um, loathe to kind of go in that direction necessarily a little bit right now, but yes, we, we have estimates that we can certainly provide council on at some point um. It's a process.
And would that affect the biennium? This biennium?
It can, but um fortunately, we're working in an uncertain environment at this point, and so uh, we've been conservative in leaving that out of the forecast that's been presented to you in the budget.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to um need to adjourn now this meeting, because start our council meeting on time. There's a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Move by Councilor Walton and second by Councilor Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any pose nay? We are adjourned. Six fifty seven. Good evening, council. Um, we just completed a roundtable, and now we're going to start our council meeting. It is now seven oh two P M. Let's record show that all council is present. Council, please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. And Councilor Washington, would you please lead?
Yes.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Reciting regular business is to approve the agenda. Council may have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by, who is it? Councilor Watson? Three discussion?
I just see you.
Oh. Yeah, it's.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor to approve the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any pose nay? And agenda is approved. Um, next item, we have two proclamations this evening. The first one is proclamation twenty-four dash eighteen, which is proclaiming October twenty twenty-four as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And we are doing this jointly, jointly with the city of North Bend. So whereas breast cancer is one of the most prevalent forms of cancer affecting individuals worldwide with significant impacts on the lives of those diagnosed, their families and their communities, and whereas early detection through regular screenings, advancements in research, and the commitment of healthcare professionals are crucial in improving survival rates and providing hope for those affected by this disease. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month provides an opportunity to promote education, support ongoing research, and raise public awareness about breast cancer, encouraging individuals to take proactive steps towards their health and well-being. Now therefore, Catherine Ross, Mary Miller, mayors of the cities of Snoqualmie and North Bend do here proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-four as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And we encourage all residents to participate in educational activities, support breast cancer research, and engage in efforts to promote awareness, early detection, gather, we can make a meaningful impact in the fight against breast cancer. And so you can read the full proclamation online. The second one is Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the city is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Snoqualmie. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are the greatest risk from fire. And whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of a fire in which you have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas residents should make sure their smoke, smoke alarms meet the needs of their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities, and test their smoke alarms at least once a month. And whereas Snoqualmie's fire responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. Now therefore, I, Catherine Ross, mayor of the city of Snoqualmie, do here pride proclaim the week of October sixth through the twelfth as Fire Prevention Week. And urge all residents of Snoqualmie to make sure their homes have working smoke alarms and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the fire, Snoqualmie's fire and emergency services. And you can read the full proclamation online. We do have joining us tonight, our chief Bailey. Would you please like to say a few words?
Thank you, mayor, for that recognition and for, for reading the, the, the statements there about fire safety. Uh, although fire safety is important for all citizens in the city, and we, you know, recommend people to check their smoke detectors, change the batteries, especially usually they say to change the batteries when it's, when you change your clocks, which is coming up here shortly. Lean up, no, or I believe, maybe beginning of November, when we change our clocks, that's when we recommend people to check the batteries and change their batteries in the smoke detector. The one thing I really wanted to highlight is, is the good work the firefighters are doing in the schools. Um, we've done it for many years, um, since I've been here over twenty years, we've been going out to all the schools, all the elementary schools in our, in our service area. Um, during October, we can't get everything in, in that same week, so we have to use the whole month of October. But we usually um offer to see any of the kids from pre-K all the way up through third grade in our elementary schools. So the firefighters will go out, give a presentation. Um, it changes from year to year based on what the NFPA is recommending that year, or it's age-specific. But it's, it's really well-received. We go out, we see the kids, we see the same kids over and over again. Um, they come up to us at community events and talk about when we went to their classrooms. Uh, but I just wanted to point that out, that it's a lot of work. Um, it's something that we love doing. We love going to the classrooms. But I think it's a, a real highlight of the, of October and Fire Prevention Week or for us month. And just to kind of highlight, last year, uh, we saw over eight hundred students um, that we went out and saw at the different schools here in the city, at the elementary schools, and then also we do some daycares and some of the private schools if they request us. So just wanted to point that out, that, you know, that's, that's one of the big highlights for the firefighters of Fire Prevention Week.
Thank you, chief. Do you have any questions for our chief? Right, thank you. At this time, we provide time for residents to comment on items that are not on the agenda. And no online public comments will be accepted during this meeting. Um, written comments are encouraged and may be submitted in person, mail, or email to our city clerk at snoqualmiewad.gov. Before I read the ground rules, is there anyone that wishes to make public comment that is in the council chambers? Okay, I'm seeing none. So our public comment is now closed. And we're moving on to consent agenda. The consent agenda contains prove the city council meeting minutes dated September third, September fourth, and September ninth, twenty twenty-four. Approved the claims report dated September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. And AB twenty-four dash zero nine one, interlocal agreement for hazardous materials response. Council may have a motion to approve the, approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Washington, second by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway. Any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none. Council, is there any discussion? Hey, looks like we moved to a vote. All those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any pose nay? And the motion passes unanimously for the consent agenda. Moving on to committee reports. Is there a report from public safety committee?
No further report.
Right. Here's a report from community development committee.
No reported this time, Madam Mayor.
Is there any report from Parks and Public Works Committee?
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. So the first community report for finance administration is AB twenty-four dash zero eight seven, the second amendment to the agreement for interim city attorney legal service. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the summary and motion?
Administration requests approval of the second amendment to the agreement for legal services with Madrona Law PLLC in the amount not to exceed five thou- five hundred and eight thousand one ninety-four, which represents a current uh, current over amount of two thousand three hundred and twenty-nine, plus approximately thirty-five thousand dollars per month to cover their interim city attorney services through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. Motion is moved to approve the second amendment to the agreement for city attorney legal services with Madrona Law PLLC in the amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-two thousand for services through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, and authorize the mayor to sign. May I have a second?
Second.
Been moved by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway and second by Councilor Washington. Is there any public regarding this item? Seeing none. Council, is there any discussion?
We need him there.
I agree.
Okay. So then I guess we're ready to vote. So moving on to approval, say aye.
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 Any pose nay? And the motion you passes unanimously for the second amendment to the agreement for interim city attorney legal services. Next item, finance administration is AB twenty-four dash zero nine two, Pacific West Rail Foundation Museum Development Agreement and Public Use Covenant. Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, would you please read the summary and motion?
The intent of the agenda bill is to allow for the construction operation of the Pacific West Rail Foundation W R F Museum on property that is currently in separate ownership in downtown Snoqualmie. The attached exhibits include a development agreement, covenants agreement, and a public use covenant describe the assembly of the property and the requirements for the project to move forward. No, I'm not, uh, we will the development agreement and public use covenant for Public Works Rail Foundation Museum and authorizing the mayor to sign. May I have a second?
Second.
Good move by Mayor Pro Tim Holloway, second by Councilor Christensen for the Pacific West Rail Foundation Museum Development Agreement and Public Use Covenant. Is there any um persons in city hall that would like to make public comment? Seeing none. We do have our um interim city attorney Lenahan, who is here to provide an overview and answer any questions. So council, do you have questions for him, or would you like a deep review? Repertory, well, Councilor Washington.
So I, yeah. So I, I have been asked to consider, uh, consider a change to the motion. And I just want to hear council feedback on this. And that would be to uh revise the motion to say authorize the mayor to sign the documents in a substantially similar form. Uh, I, I just balked on that because the, it, we can get into discussions of what substantially similar is. Uh, where prior when we've done this, we've at least set the bounds of what we're expecting is, is change. Um, just your feedback on doing that, or?
Councilor Benson?
So, so does that mean, does that mean if there are minor alterations later on, that, that won't affect the, the, they can make, but, but minor changes to the document after we've approved it? After, after the mayor has signed it, is that, is that what substantially singular?
Well, and, but I would only caveat it that in, in the opinion of city administrator, the mayor, if there are um
Minor.
Minor changes, they're authorized to sign against. I just don't want us to get into argument of, you know, your minor, my major.
Right.
And I think our city attorney has some examples, because for instance, the resolution's in there, but it should be an agenda bill, for instance, is one thing.
So normally, when we have contracts and there's a resolution involved that says, the resolution will actually say on it that the mayor or the city administrator with approval of the city attorney can make clerical errors and other, so it will say a, a. That the mayor or the city administrator with approval of the city attorney can make clerical errors and other, so it will say approved in substantially similar form and will authorize us to. Change cross references, if there's dates that are wrong or something like that that we need to fix, we don't have to bring it back to you to have to approve it again. This, in this case, there isn't a resolution attached, it's just an agenda bill. And so my, my thought was, well, the motion could just have that same language that you would normally have in a resolution. That will allow us to make those kind of tweaks. Going through it, honestly, I think the only things that I, I know need to be changed, there's a blank that needs to be filled in. That says, it, and it's the number of days that we would be negotiating in the event that there is a viability notice given and we have to figure out if we want to buy their property back or not, like. It's, it's technical things like how many days that process goes on. Um there's a, there's a statement in the recitals to the development agreement that says. Uh this, this is being approved pursuant to resolution number blank. Like I said, there is no resolution, so we need to actually change that to say pursuant to agenda bill number. Twenty four dash oh nine two instead of resolution number blah. So it's just those kinds of little. Technical cleanups. I found one typo just as I was looking at it a minute ago. I'd like to fix that. You know, so just little things like that is the reason why we would add that substantially similar language. But if you're not comfortable doing that, if you'd like us to bring back a fully clean one. The next time, that's obviously totally okay, so.
Repertory Holloway.
Kind of my case in point, the examples you gave, as far as the number of days. Have a discussion is, is not. A minor clerical change, it's substantive change.
It, it is a substantive term, correct. It's just, I didn't know if the council would be. Would have strong feelings about whether it's sixty days or ninety days or seventy five days or, you know, that kind of thing. It's more of an administrative process of like, how long do we want this? Exchange of documents to go on, so. That's all.
Council Benson.
I feel like a good reason to have a city attorney. I mean, I, 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 I don't. I. If, if you made that motion, I would second it. So I, that, I, I'm, I'm not concerned about whether it's sixty or seventy five or ninety. I, I think, I think we have a city attorney that can help us figure out. What works best for that sort of thing.
Council Johnson.
I agree if it's sixty or ninety, uh I don't agree if it's five or. You know, three hundred and sixty five. So I don't know what the range actually is. Um they can pinky swear that it will be a certain thing and I don't know. Uh you know, there'll be this range. I don't know what kind of weight that holds. Um.
It depends on if it's a legally binding pinky swear.
Right, exactly. Uh so personally, that, that sounds like enough that I'd want to know. I would know what I'm agreeing to. That um. Yeah. There you go. Okay, that's my personal opinion on, on a good example of a blank. The other one about, um you know, there's a blank for, uh I don't know if it's supposed to be five point two point two, or was it five point two point three? Yeah, we'll fill it in later. That I don't care about. But it sounds like there might be some things. That I want to see the clean copy of personally.
Council Benson.
And I, I guess my only response to that was, it would be that. You know, we have representation that I feel comfortable with and I would hate to hold this prod, process up. So that we can. Uh so that we can okay something that. Substantively doesn't make any difference is probably not going to ever come up. Um so that would be the only reason that, that, that would be my only pushback on what you're saying.
And I think we could define those days while you're here this evening. The rest of it would be just be clerical.
We, we could, although, you know, Mr. Hamley may prefer to have his legal counsel weigh in on that because as Councilmember Johnson said, it is a blank and we haven't actually talked about that number. It's just. Kind of similar to some other things that we've already filled in, so. I don't want to commit you to something you don't want to commit to and I don't want, and I certainly don't want Jerry to find out that I'm negotiating a number with you sitting here and he's not, so.
Council Johnson.
Actually, I think that is actually a really good point is, um perhaps the representation actually thinks that sixty is a ridiculous number of days and we don't know that. Um maybe they think that it really needs to be a hundred and eighty or something like, that's, that's my issue is I just don't know what the right range is. Um. And I do have a couple of other questions that could end up uh. Making things happen, so we'll see, we'll see as we talk through tonight, um but that's my opinion on that.
Council Walton.
And I'm just reading through on page twenty eight, there's also another blank. It says within. Blank days of receipt of purchase. So you know, if we could just clarify and make sure that. We fill that in, is it a hundred and eighty days?
That, that is the blank I was referring to.
Okay, that was a blank. Okay, thank you.
Repertory Holloway.
Sorry. Can we move forward? The motion is, is. Work with the applicant to close out those finer items and do the clerical and bring it back one more time for. Final approval, I guess. I'd be comfortable.
I'm. Council Christianson.
I, I'm comfortable going forward in that manner.
Yeah, okay.
I'd like to see the, the blanks being addressed. If there are grammatical things that are not substantive in nature, I don't need to see it again. But again, filling in blanks and making sure that everybody's on the same page, I think would be preferable going forward since it is a big. Project.
Right. Okay.
There.
City Attorney.
Uh I, 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 that's totally uh an appropriate resolution. I don't think that there is any reason why pushing it off a couple of weeks is going to change anything, but. I don't know if Mr. Hambling has an opinion on that since he is here, but.
I think it actually becomes three weeks because next week is a fifth Monday, so.
Can we write a contract like that?
Did you call your attorneys?
Well, ninety days would make it symmetrical with the other provisions and, you know.
So we'll do ninety days in there. That's Mayor Portem Holloway.
I just didn't want to get into that negotiation in here.
Don't think it's done.
I would want his attorney involved just in case. Can you call? Okay, uh other than that, so I'll leave the motion as it stands. Uh other than that, uh. This all looks good. I. Things I've looked at for. Were there for me, so. Um recommend we move forward. Go ahead.
Council Rice.
Yeah, I just had a quick question. So I'm looking at. A one. Looking at the three part, the four parcels. Does it include, I can't tell it's aerial. Does it include the coffee shop? Is that, is that included as well? Okay, okay.
Council Johnson.
Um so a couple of uh simple things, I just got a little bit kind of, I wasn't exactly sure which side faces what. Um so this is exhibit G. Um I guess this would just be. Throughout exhibit G, uh which side uh faces railroad and which side faces King Street? That's what I assumed. That's what I assumed. Alright, I want to make sure. Okay, yeah. Um because, um oh sorry, American.
Yep.
Yeah, my understanding was that I believe that in the downtown, downtown historic district, um that there's a thing about uh that. Uh one side has to, or the side facing the street. Has to be broken up in terms of like uh three segments vertically uh to give that relief rather than being a blank wall and this one does that. Um I believe that there's a thing about the, the design would go to the planning commission anyway for final approvals, they'll look at that and work. Um but I am.
You're saying it does break it up, so it doesn't have that.
Right, so anyway, I was just glad to hear that is the answer.
Bye Susan.
Um can I do a sub winner? You can go to someone else.
So I think Council Christianson.
Uh yeah, can I be? And if anybody else has a comment, I just want to find a spot on here. I have my notes up here, but. Downstage, nobody else has.
Hey, Council Walton.
Yeah, I've got three um either questions, comments or observations, I guess. First one is, is this outside the historic? District overlay? Because I, I believe it is. So some of the things.
I, I also share that belief, but our community development director is not here tonight and she would be the one who could answer that.
Just because that may have some impact on what Councilmember Johnson brought up and, and. If it's outside, then it's, you know, can reflect, but it doesn't necessarily need to follow along. So I just wanted to point that out. Two other things, and by the way, I'm a huge fan of this. I think it's going to be incredibly important for the downtown. Um one is parking, just having been a former retailer, um knowing that people tend to see if. There's not a parking spot right in front of the business. They'll say there's no parking and drive on, yet they'll go to the mall. And walk three miles at the mall. For whatever reason, it's kind of that. So I guess one of my concerns. Where would bus parking be? Because I presume there's going to be schools and, and, you know, other groups bringing buses. Where is that being designated for?
Certainly, when she get up and speaking of, so we have Rob Nelson, we also have Peter Hamling that has joined us this evening.
Yeah, so if you look on King Street, so King Street is, you cross Railroad Avenue, obviously, and headed towards a brewery there. King Street, along King Street, there's actually a spot where the road kind of comes in and there's enough room for two buses right there. So we've looked at that spot as a. Unload and loads little location for tourist buses and school buses and that sort of thing.
Okay.
The other thing is to speak to people looking for a parking space. I imagine we are, way we would run the businesses where you can purchase tickets online. So if somebody's bought tickets to, to visit the museum, hopefully somebody isn't going to just, you know, make one trip around, go up. I'm out forty dollars today, you know, so uh hopefully that'll be one thing. And in the drawing, the early drawings, we do have parking behind the building on the Snoqualmie Riverside. Uh so it's probably not nearly what there is right now, but we are looking to address some parking behind there.
Our city administrator, Chambas.
Um and then there was also a downtown parking study conducted as part of the last comprehensive plan. And in that study, it identified that there's a thousand parking spaces available downtown. Now caveat, that study did include street parking. Off of the railroad. Um but as part of this project as it moves forward, I fully intend for the city to do it another downtown parking study. And coordinate a signage response so that part, the parking that does exist is found. And I know it's one of just priorities of the next couple of years to resurface and reline all the downtown parking lots so that they're in tip top condition so that. People can find where to park.
If you don't mind me speaking to that real quickly. I've lived here forty years, my parents longer than that. I have a lot of people that have grown up here, went to elementary school here. When I told them that the church right here, that that's a city parking lot. Everyone has been blown away so far and my parents live. Less than a mile away from here. So you know, just simple signage for, for parking and I think it'd go a long way and people won't have to walk as far as they necessarily think they have to.
Council Walton.
Yeah, as continuation of the parking thing. I, I did the numbers on the, the first design and I kind of got it sketched out of my mind, how many cars per hour? You have an idea of how many cars per hour because I, I, I don't want to state what I think.
We, we have not worked through those numbers yet. Um I think. Part of it is figuring out if this is something that would work in downtown and that, that would move on and then we'll start addressing those things.
Yes, it would. So I, I think to um the city administrators' point that, you know, with a thousand, even if only a third of them. Are available. You're still talking about probably under fifty an hour. Packs, maybe, maybe slightly higher than that, definitely under a hundred an hour.
I think another thing to remember is that when the North Coast Railway is running their train, that's usually. Best case scenario, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, a lot of nights are Saturday and Sunday. So when downtown, growing up here, we know that downtown is not nearly as busy Monday through Friday. So our museum would be open. Most likely six days a week, probably maybe closed on Monday, we're not sure yet. But there's a lot of parking and parking. Closer to our facility. And another thing with the location of our buildings, it now pushes it to the north a little bit. So parking, the parking lot down by the big log a little bit past that. I think that right now is an obstacle for a family. If you get out with the stroller, it's kind of a ways down to the railway museum. But now we've pulled something further down that it doesn't feel like a big truck, which right now it kind of does.
Not for Thomas.
One, one last follow up, and that's the third point, and that's the operating hours because we never. Memorialized it in this. There's a big challenge downtown um that you will help solve and I, I just want to put this. This notion forward and that is. We have a lot of guests staying over at Salish. And they come downtown on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays to find so many businesses closed. This is an opportunity to, and especially being a city. Parcel at this point of making sure that we kind of close that gap and, and bring more tourists for all the week and especially, you know, tho- those days that. The, the railway museum is not operating, which is Monday through Friday or Monday through Thursday. And uh I just want to make sure and, and I'd really like to see that in here that the operating hours are these hours.
They are in the covenant on page five.
On page five, okay. Which says.
Uh that's the development agreement.
Part of the development.
Now, if you look in the covenant, it's one of the defined terms. There's a defined term for operating hours. And so right now they're defined as Wednesday through Monday, ten to six, except Christmas, New Year's, Thanksgiving. Independence Day and up to three other holidays as determined by the foundation. So if you want different operating hours. As a contractual obligation, we need to talk about that.
Can we tweak that to close never?
Council Benson.
Maybe we have Nicole, Weeby.
You have a question for Nicole Weeby?
We, we talked with them originally about Monday and specifically because you do speak to a good, a good point that on Mondays. Much of downtown is often closed. Again, these are small businesses. They have to have days off, but the businesses that are closed on Monday, um what am I trying to say? They should be open on Monday. They should be open on Monday to get the overflow for the people that have come in for the weekend and they're checking out because the businesses that are open on Monday find it's one of their busier days. So we have counseled them in the past talking about that, which is why the agreement is written and we've asked them to stay. Um open on Monday and pick, I think, Tuesday as their day off. So that was deliberate.
Thank you. I'm done.
Great, thank you. Mayor Portem Holloway.
At, at least according to the zoning map on our website, uh this property is in the historic district and is not in the landmark district.
Yes. Council Johnson.
Yeah, next thing was uh about the traffic flow. I wasn't quite able to figure out what the intended flow is uh for traffic going in for parking and stuff. Um I see that there is space behind uh the property uh where there can be parking. Um. Is then tend to be, you go in and you turn around at the end and come out. Is there like a, a top down map that shows that flow and I just didn't see it?
City Mr. Chambas.
So we, that's kind of beyond the scope of these documents, like we kind of approach is what we're going to do with the planning commission, but that's going to need to be worked out still. Because we still got to park there too. So we don't want to build a, you know, a wall between the downtown and the park with a busy road, so. We're going to work together to envision a few options and bring them forward at the appropriate time, but there's nothing in here that talks about that yet.
And that follow up on that. Uh how does that interface with the state highway two oh two and uh how the state uh, well, I mean, it's their road, right? So i- is, is there some conversation with um, um with the state with regard to any sort of um uh entries and exits, et cetera?
If when the design. It occurs, there is an entry into the state highway, yes, they would be consulted and involved in those discussions.
Council Christianson.
Um yeah, so for the conveyance agreement under indemnifications, um if someone could just look at fourteen B, I think that there's some language that. Was meant to be switched over, says indemnification by PWRF. Following the closing, PWRF shall identify and hold the city and its affiliates, members and partners, shareholders, blah, blah. That language. Should instead be stating indemnify and hold harmless the city, its officers, agents, employees and elected officials. For many and all liabilities. I think it was basically just left in.
Oh, yeah.
As more of a corporate document instead of a municipality.
Yeah.
That was one. And then um my other one is just a request to go through. The documents basically require certain amount and certain types of insurance while the property is being developed. And then it goes through and it states that once it has basically been put into place, that those additional types of insurance are no longer required, which makes sense. But just make sure that all of the provisions that need to be in the document are still in, because I think that there is maybe a point that might need to be tweaked.
I'm sorry, could you say that last part again?
Yeah, so it's specifically, and I couldn't find the the page in there, I can email it to you, but basically, once the property is built, there are certain provisions and requirements for insurance coverage type by contractor and and by the operator as well.
Right.
And just making sure that the types of insurance that we want to see maintained as the the museum is in operation continue to be identified in the contract.
So that would be in the in the use covenant. There's a provision in there that talks about their requirements, general insurance requirements, property insurance requirements, liability insurance requirements. If that's the kind of thing you're looking for, those are in the, and think, think of the covenant, the public use covenant as sort of their operating commitments, things that they will do while they're actually in control of the premises. So that's that's where those are for now.
Councillor Johnson.
All right. My last thing that I'm aware of that I wanted to ask about was page ten of the development agreement four point two point two B. And it says there, the city shall waive or as needed bear at its sole expense any permitting fees or other project related city costs, including without limitation any internal or external project management or oversight expenses, such as the cost of third party reviews and inspections that the city may incur from the date of execution of this agreement until completion of project construction. So there are all kinds of permits and fees that we charge for the process. Is this a standard practice that the city uses for nonprofits and these such buildings? And I guess that's the first thing, is that is that something that we have done in the past? Is that kind of a standard operating procedure?
So I can't speak to the city's past practice because I haven't been around the city, but it is a standard practice when the city is kind of a co-sponsor or a co-participant in the project. Because, you know, particularly in this case where this the city is sort of turning over the land as part of a of a private development project. And so I think in this case, it's to minimize the costs and make sure that the funds that are raised go towards the tourist attraction itself rather than to the, you know, engineering reviewers who do that work. So that's kind of where that's. In this case, it's, you know, yes, the city will, the city will be lack of a better term, eating the costs that it would normally tax against the developer. But in this case, it's because it is for a city benefit, not just a private benefit, so.
Follow on.
Right. And specifically, the city interest here being the lands, that that's what's referenced to rather than necessarily the tourism it could generate. And, you know, just to be perfectly blunt, there is another project that I'm aware of that a nonprofit is working on that is in a similar venue or not venue, but it's wrong term, similar vein. And I'm not sure if they got that same benefit. But if there's a specific difference that this one involves a conveyance of city land, then I could probably get there.
So it's it's not so much about the city land, it is about the public revenue, it is about the public benefit that this is providing to the city as a whole, rather than the benefit to just a private organization. This is being, I guess it's being viewed as it is city land, it is city property, and we're turning it into an attraction that is going to improve the downtown for the benefit of everyone and provide revenue to the city in the form of tourism dollars, tax dollars, that sort of thing. So that's, it's it's not something that's required. It was something that was requested and approved by the administration. It's after the council, whether you want to support that or not.
So Councillor Watten and then Councillor Benson.
I I think it's important to point out, this is a nonprofit organization. So, you know, it's a kind of a partnership between a nonprofit to help boost economic development and vitality. And for that, I think it's an awesome partnership. But, you know, it's there's some give and take on both sides and and we, no, I I think coming back to, we we need to make sure that it's not impeding business for existing businesses, but enhancing, giving people a reason to come downtown. And because of that, it will help other businesses thrive and drive up sales tax revenues, especially as we're located between two hotels at that point where we're not getting revenues from. And this this is a critical link and that we've had over the time. One, one very very quick comment, too. It's based on seventy, up to seventy thousand visitors. And I did the math. It works out to be about three hundred visitors a day. And if you figure out that those visitors would be three to a car, we're talking about a hundred cars over the course of a day. So it's very reasonable. It shouldn't have a huge impact on our available parking.
Thank you. Councillor Benson.
Yeah, as to the waiving of the the fees for permitting and and that's where they, this is a huge endeavor, which I I think it's actually, it's in this document, the, all the people that are helping to fund it, it's an enormous fundraising challenge. So I would say, you know, whatever we can do to offset that, you know, the only place where I would suddenly have a problem with it is if we were if we were saying as a city, well, we're not charging for what's going on at the railroad. So we need to make sure that we're we're being extra vigilant to to collect from everybody else in this. That would, that would be a problem if we were trying to make up for what we were, what we were giving on this project, but I don't see that happening. You know, we'll keep our eyes open. But as far as I'm concerned, whatever we can do to help to make sure that as many of the funds that have been raised go into making a fantastic attraction, the better.
Councillor Johnson.
So then, based on that information, I have a question that might at first sound somewhat unrelated, but it has a huge impact on how I feel about this then, about the waiver of fees. Can we look at other projects that are similar in scale by nonprofits in the city? Look at what fees they have paid and consider as a council reimbursing them for those fees and waiving fees in the future for those projects. Is that something that we can do as a council? I almost wondered if we should go into executive session for me to ask that question.
I think that's much more of an appropriate topic to talk about in an executive session.
Okay, we'll go into executive session.
Second.
So it's been moved by Councillor Johnson, second by Councillor Benson to go into executive session during discussion. All in favor of going into executive session, say aye.
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 Any pose nay? All right. So I need to read in executive session, hang on for a second.
Potential litigation.
Okay, so executive session pursuant to RCW forty two dot three zero dot one ten one I potential litigation or legal risks of proposed action. And how long do we think?
Ten.
Ten minutes? Okay.
Six and a half.
Go in for ten minutes. Well, yeah, ten minutes. I I it'll actually take, we'll probably have to go upstairs. So let's give us five minutes to get up there. So we'll be back by eight o'clock. So we're going to pause our meeting and go to executive session upstairs in the Mount Si Conference Room. And we will be done by eight o'clock.
Commercial break.
Commercial break. Okay, it's now eight oh four PM and we are back from our executive session. So continuing our conversation, discussion regarding the model train. So Councillor Johnson.
Yeah, I think that that I feel satisfied in in my line of questioning on that last topic.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? And we do have two people representative, representing Pacific West Rail Foundation. If you have any questions for them.
How soon?
Shovels on the ground. Well, now a few weeks later, apparently.
Okay. This sounds like we have a couple of things to fill in to the development agreement, I believe. So you've chosen not to vote on it this evening, is that correct? Are we going to vote on it?
We could vote on it with the with the holes and the holes to be filled in and come back. Are we why don't we just wait for three weeks and have it come back completed?
There may be work they can do between now and then, though.
If we want to have a special council meeting.
What are you looking to me for?
We go look.
Solve your problem?
Councillor Chris, Christensen.
Well, so my thought is that if we are meeting on the fifth Monday, which is next week, and this is just getting filled in and nobody has any gigantic concerns, I assume that we could quickly check the fill in the blanks, check whatever additional things are and just.
I I believe Jerry and I could iron this out tomorrow. And if if your city clerk is able to get out a special meeting notice to add this to she's like giving me the side eye.
Mayor Tim Holloway, yes.
Playing for that, why don't we, can we disposition it in one of those workshop?
If you have a special, a notice that says you're going to take action on something, normally you wouldn't take action in a workshop, but if you give a special meeting notice where you say we're going to take action on this item, then you can take action on it.
We got time to revise the notice and say we can take action.
I think we are planning to take action at the October third one as well. So okay, so we can. Okay, so we'll add it to the agenda for September thirtieth. Everyone fine with that? Thumbs up? All right, that sounds great. Great. Very exciting. Moving on.
Maybe twenty four.
Right, so now we'll move on. Thank you. Then we'll move on to maybe twenty four dash zero nine four, the twenty twenty five, twenty six human services funding recommendations. Mayor Tim Holloway, would you please read the summary and motion?
City receives thirteen applications from the community organizations for human services funding in the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six biennium. The Human Services Advisory Committee reviewed and scored the applications August to make a funding recommendation to the city. Move to approve the Human Services Advisory Funding Recommendations outlined in attachments. Well, the or through we off, why isn't A, B, C?
Three different options.
No, which ones?
A, B.
A, B, or C?
They get progressively more expensive.
Choose A.
Which is the one with eighty thousand opioid in it?
Uh, B and C.
B and C.
B and C. And if we do that one, I want to have the conversation that we had earlier all over again.
Do you need assistance with the motion? Your part to Malloy.
Well, it's, yes, which one are we approving, A, B, or C?
Well, that we can bring up the discussion, so.
So complete the motion and we'll have a discussion as soon as I can find back where. Move to approve Human Services Advisory Recommendations outlined in attachment A, B, or C to be determined for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six biennium.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mayor Tim Holloway, second by Councillor Washington for the Human Services Funding Recommendation. Is there any public comment regarding that? Seeing none in the comments or chambers, we have City Clerk Dean, would you please provide an overview of the human services?
Well, there are three different options. The first one is using the amounts that the budget department has come up with for the biennium. That was six hundred and thirty three thousand. That would leave about a hundred and actually ninety nine thousand shortage from what was requested from the organizations. Option two or attachment B is the proposal to use that six hundred and thirty three thousand funds plus that opioid settlement funds, which the two organizations that have requested funding for substance abuse use or services and which we believe would qualify for use. That would be a total of seven hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And then the third option was to use the six hundred and thirty three plus the eighty plus an additional nineteen thousand two hundred fifty five to cover the funding gap. That would be just for the biennium. These are not ongoing expenses. It's a one time, these are one time just for this budget cycle.
Councillor Washington.
For clarity, where is the nineteen five coming from with the third option?
That would be.
General function.
So the ninety is coming from the opioid, the nineteen five is coming from the general. Okay, thank you.
Great. Mayor Tim Holloway.
Move to amend the motion to go with option B. Damn second.
Motion dies from a lack of second.
Move to amend the motion to go with option A.
So it was second. So there's a motion to amend the motion to accept option A and second by Councillor Benson. Councillor Johnson.
Yeah. So then, under option A, what happens to the eighty thousand under that option? So my understanding was, I'm so sorry, I just needed a quiche refresher. So we still have the money that comes in from the opioid settlements. And we can't put that into like fund balance or something. I said, I suppose in that one fund, can we do that? Or do we have to appropriate it within a certain amount of time, in which case we just say appropriate to spending it on the thing we're supposed to spend it on? Yeah, that's what I'm worried about is what happens to the opioid funds if we go with option A.
Those funds would remain in that in that fund. Until a council is appointed and things are resolved.
Yeah, we could just stay in fund balance.
It would just stay within fund balance. We would continue to collect that. The settlements, some of them are going to last twenty years at this point, right? So we're expecting some set of funds annually. As far as I'm aware, there's no timeline in which we have to spend it.
Okay.
At this point. So consequently, it will just kind of collect within fund balance, crew and fund balance. And then that's council's future discretion, we can appropriate those funds and then spend them once we've got things up.
So Councillor Cotton.
So kind of going back to our previous discussion, then I'm not saying that we wouldn't take any funds from the opioid settlement fund. What I'm saying is let's get our ducks in a row and, you know, establish the the abatement council so that we can and also give other agencies that weren't included in this human services group that might also be able to utilize those funds and give them a chance to submit proposals as well. So I'm not saying, no, I'm just saying. So I'm not saying, no, I'm just saying, hey, we've, we can at least start distributing the first half of the disbursements with the six hundred and thirty-three hundred thousand and then um, you know, we can, we can add to that uh, in the future.
Council Christensen?
Um, I just have a couple of quick questions. So it's my understanding that when we go out and we do the, the basically the call for projects, we are looking for in Health and Human Services uh, committee is looking for groups that are currently active in Sepulme in the greater valley area. Right? And ones who have a proven track record. Are we aware of any that specifically address the opioid epidemic that we have not missed? Or like, do we have a reason to believe that we have missed someone or that there is a group out there in existence that didn't get the chance?
There's first responders.
Yeah, anyone could have applied.
So, but they can't respond for the So that was my, my point is that there are agencies that are not nonprofits that might not qualify for that to be able to use that funding for other uh, opioid abatement projects besides uh, just the, the two potential projects. Um, so what I'm saying is at least give a chance, whatever the O A C decides for other to come in and um, you know, put in applications if they want. If they don't want to, then um, but I can certainly see some projects that um, our cities first responders would be interested in upon.
Okay, but just so that I understand then, it's, it would be our folks who are already here, couldn't they just get like through the normal budgetary approval process, couldn't they just normally get it through the department's budget? I don't, sorry, I want to make sure I'm not missing.
Well, why put, why take from the department's budget for potential funds that, that for uh, you know, that are spearheaded for opioid uh, abatement issues that can come from other areas?
So Council Benson and Council.
Yeah, I, 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 uh, my, my concern is taking these funds that are specifically meant for opioid abatement and opioid problems and I'm shoehorning them into things that, that partially fit that bill. I think, you know, we, we all know what a scourge the opioid epidemic has been. And uh, it would be a shame not to use eighty thousand dollars of that directly for eighty thousand dollars of benefit in that problem.
Council Watten, you had.
Okay, one of the things I'm struggling with is we don't have a lot of context to the applications that have come in and I, I don't know, I don't recall in the, the past if, if that's been very transparent. I'm looking at I, I trust the process and I trust the people that are on the Human Services Association. I just need to, to understand a little bit more because we're setting aside a certain amount of our, our budget for human services, knowing that nonprofits are going to do an excellent job in delivering. But I, I guess the thing that I'm, I'm, I want to make sure that we know and understand is how many people are being impacted? And what's the desired outcome? And at the end, when they apply next time, are they reporting back the results that we were expecting? And uh, I'm, and any clarification or better education for myself would be helpful because you know, the seven of us are actually representing all of the population and, and having that might make it a little bit easier.
So Mayor Pen, Tim Holloway is the one that sits on that. Do you want to give us some insight as well as we have our city clerk?
Two comments. One, it, it's not that we are trying to shoehorn this stuff in the opioid. We think these eighty thousand qualify. Okay, so it's, it's not a shoehorn. We think they qualify and that eighty thousand would be contingent upon the opioid council allocating, okay? It's kind of what, I'm not upset, but that's why I said B. Not touching, but anyway, um, but anyway, so um, human services goes through and they go through a, a ranked. They, there are applications, they fill them out, they go have lengthy discussions on the services and the application, what they've done in part, and they have a ranked listing they go through as far as the applicants they have. Okay, so there is a process they go through. There is an application. There is weighted review of, of those applications. Okay? And yeah, I'm your representative on that list. Okay, just one of the fun things. Okay, so uh, we can, if you want, I mean, you can be provided the applications and go through and review all you want as all, and in addition to the scoring sheet they have, okay? Um, but in part, um, we did delegate to them to go do this for us because they're closer to it than us seven members here. Um, and I have to, I have an attorney question at this stage. Is this there's one of these where you can, you can either say yes, or you can say no, but you can't say somewhere in between. Is human services one of those where you either approve what they present to you? Or you say know what you present, but you can't start moving settling with it.
And I have to consult your code language because I don't know that off the top of my head.
That was LTAC.
I think you're correct.
It, it came up in the context of LTAC, but I don't know if it's just LTAC or not.
Okay, which is not true. But again, they go through a review process and that's open if you want to see the material.
I was gonna say, one of, one of these organizations that's on the list that did um, include substance abuse had reached out maybe nine months ago, asking how we would be using our opioid funding because, because they actually worked with the youth at the high school and they would be able to use it um, with training and other things. So whatever their program is, they reached out because that would help them and as well as that would, that's how you would probably the most beneficial use of the opioid funding, but Council Johnson?
And, and I completely agree with that. And I think that these two are fantastic programs uh, that were um, that were on the list. It's just that I believe that, and I was, by the way, very much in favor of option C a week ago. However, my um, uh, my, uh, my, my tune has changed. Uh, I messed up all my metaphors tonight, but anyway, um.
Tune is on the other foot.
Yes, exactly. Uh, in that, if there's going to be this other advisory council, it, it seems odd for us to use the human res- um, human resources. I'm just not on it tonight. Uh, the um, Human Services Commission to uh, do the thing that this other council was supposed to have done. So these two programs could be the things that end up actually being the things to move forward. It just seems to me, it sounds like uh, the opioid council is supposed to be the group that makes those determinations rather than uh, human services. And so that is why I am now leaning toward option one, in that it just seems that there is a process that is being put in place for how these posted cited for where they're supposed to go. Um, and if that is the case, then that's what we should be doing is take their recommendation and uh, put the funds that way. It very well could be these two. That'd be great, but it could be there's something else that just didn't know that these funds were going to be um, uh, considered by human services. And so they didn't know to apply. I don't know of any, but I leave open the possibility.
We need that canceled.
Mayor President Holloway?
And uh, to further help on the process, the little chart on the bottom is the priority, funding priority. So food, eat, roof, support for young youth. That's their priorities and this is how the percentage broke out for the biennium.
Any other conversation? Questions? Right, so there, the motion has changed to um, to prove, I guess, option one. Well, it's attachment A, option one.
There is no option A.
Attachment A, option one, yes.
Uh, can those uh, two applicants be told of the reasoning for the decision that, you know, the council didn't say, no, we don't actually think that's an important issue? That, you know, that there was some reasoning behind it.
Um, so the two organizations were Empower Youth for twenty and Friends of Youth, Alex for sixty. Um, so the Human Services Advisory Committee recommended initially on the amount that was budgeted funding Friends of Youth for that entire amount and Empower funding it for a partial. So if we're going with attachment A, option one, Friends of Youth will already get the full funding. And Empower will get partial funding, not using any of the opioid settlement funds. So those are dollars that potentially could have gone to somebody else, that's all.
Correct.
I think our city clerk has an opinion.
No, I just, I, I gave you options and
Department of Police.
Having discussions.
Okay, Mayor President Holloway?
Okay, so, sorry, I'm gonna spin this up. Given that as consideration, in essence, do we want to approve option B to minus the opioid funds?
It's a, a top one A.
Now, op- optional, careful what she said. There are two organizations we thought, we stated could benefit from opioid funds. But in option A, they're fully or partially funded for what they requested. In option B, they are fully funded, but only fully funded by the opioid fund. So if you go with A strictly, you've taken, what was the first one? It wasn't Friends of Youth, it was and, and, and power you've, you've given them full funding request and you've kind of made their case for opioid funding rest. Because they got full funding.
Council Benson?
I disagree. I think that, I think that Council Member Cotton's point, I and, and the point that Mr. Butte made is this is a longer term issue. You know, we're going to be receiving opioid funds over the course of the next twenty years. And if we don't have this, if we don't have this council figured out, the, the opioid abatement council figured out, then this is going to be an ongoing problem. These eighty thousand dollars don't disappear if we don't use them right now. Um, but if we don't use them right now and we set up the opioid abatement council that we're supposed to have, then we can make sure that those funds are properly utilized in the future. Um, and I don't think that, I, I, I think that makes a lot more sense and has a lot more potential benefit downstream.
Our finance director, Boote.
Well, I just want to add a dendum. It's not like we're going to receive hundreds of thousands of dollars year after year after year. So just keep that in mind, too. It's going to be probably after the first summer that we're going to get. And I've certainly, there's some outstanding uh, settlements to go through, but it's probably in the tens of thousands of dollars for the most part of what we might see year after year after year. So.
Yeah, but tens of thousand dollars here, tens of thousand dollars there. Eventually, you're talking about real money.
It's all real, but yeah.
Okay, so currently the motion on the table is for attachment A, option one. We ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any posnay? So, it has passed.
Division.
Six to one um, with May was um, Mayor President Holloway. Right. Moving on.
We still like you.
Moving on is the
We haven't taken a vote.
It's not required.
Okay.
All right, no further report from Finance Administration.
Thank you. Next is the mayor's report. So several things coming up. We have the S V G A, which is this meeting in Duval this Wednesday. And hopefully some of you are planning to attend. If you're, raise your hand, let me know.
Is this Wednesday?
Yay, this Wednesday. Right.
If it was carpool, let me know.
Right, that's great. It's good to have a good presence there, so.
Does the notice about the potential uh, quorum count toward the carpool?
Yeah, that's a concern.
I do not recommend.
Okay, so that's great. Um, and then also you should receive an email from S C A regarding regional boards and committees. Right now, those are open. There's several different seats that are, that are available. So if you're interested in applying for one, I, first of all, I would check with the other fellow council members, make sure that you both aren't applying for the same thing. Um, but please apply. It's great to have you on, you need the regional boards or committees, and there's lots of options to select from. So I think the dates like mid-October, they need to apply. And then we have a state auditor exit conference on October eighth at three thirty, and I think it's only on teams, is that right? Okay.
Can you check on that?
So in person or teams? And then last week, I presented to the Growth Management Planning Council and regarding our housing growth target. And so we, as you remember, we are, you know, requesting reduction from fifteen hundred to seven hundred and nineteen housing units. Um, and I'd say based on our information provided over the past year, we've been staying in contact with them and then attending the different meetings and providing different letters and information. They, this looks like King County will probably um, submit kind of a motion to approve our housing growth target. And I think the main factor of this is um, that our water system plan adoption is dependent on the successful revision of our housing growth target. Because we do not have enough water for the fifteen hundred additional homes, we will for seven hundred and nineteen. So um, so we'll find out next month, they should, most likely will be um, voting on it. If they don't, it'll be later this year, early next year, but hopefully it'll be next month. That way we can actually then submit our comprehensive plan for approval with the reduced housing growth target. So. I think the only other thing I know, um, we brought up an F and A about the legislative priorities. And I think Mayor President Holloway was going to take a, a first look at the draft or come up with a draft. And again, this is the legislative budget session that's coming up, so it's pretty important to stay in contact with our legislatures. And we're going to put a draft letter together regarding community center expansion. And so we'll be happy to bring that to you. We'll just email it to you to look at if you're interested in signing it, or if you'd rather just have it from the mayor. It'd be great if you guys, you know, would approve it and sign it and send it to, we can, you know, send it to our King County Councilmember, to Congresswoman Schreier, as well as our um, state legislatures. So we'll have that ready to go next week. And that's all I have. Is there any commission or committee liaison reports? Council Watten?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, on October second, I am hosting the Housing Chat, the monthly Housing Chat. And my special guest is Jonathan Pounds uh, from the Master Builders Association, levers of housing affordability. They've done a lot of research and work on, on ways that communities can adopt um, measures to, to help um, increase the, the supply. Um, and it was presented a few months ago by Executive Director Jerry Hall and, and uh, there's some really good information. So um, if you have a chance to join in person, we'll have room for twenty or thirty people in the room. Otherwise, you can join online.
Right.
And that's a twelve to one
Right.
in North Bend.
Right, thank you. Any other updates? Finance Director Boote?
Uh, just a correction, basically. So yes, the August, sorry, not the August, I'm losing my mind. October the eighth date, basically with the exit conference with the state auditor's office is by team. But we will certainly be available here in the council chambers or potentially upstairs. If you want to join uh, the administrative staff here. And we might have candy available at that.
There you go. All right. Anything else? There be no further business to come before council. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
By Mayor Protim Hallway, second by Council Wat- Washington. Whoever say aye? We are adjourned.